It is a little past seven, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Darcy, would you call the vote, please?
Engelhardt?
Here.
Engstrom?
Here.
Malcolm?
Mar?
Yeah.
Mar?
Are these on?
Yeah.
Usually have a light at the bottom.
I've never seen it. Oh, I see a blue light. I see yours from here.
Oh, it's back. Okay, all right.
Are you? You're live?
Yes, I'm reflecting off.
Okay, let's go on to item three, the pledge, please. Everybody that's able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our
Okay, then item four is perfection and approval of the agenda. Motion to do that, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oui, no, carry. Okay, item five is public conversation? Dom, are you up for that?
I'm good.
All right. I guess we don't have any of that then. So let's go on to item six, and a public hearing. For max tax levy FY 2324, resolution number 1379-23, a resolution approving the maximum tax dollars from certain levies for the city's proposed fiscal year 2023 through 2024 budget. Darcy, can you? You like this?
Sure, yeah. So based on your valuations, if you look at your proposed max tax levy, we are telling the public that we will not increase their tax levies no more than 2%. So if you look at the year affected and then the proposed maximum levy amounts, it's the dollar amounts that we are looking at levying for our general fund, property liability insurance, emergency levy, and then the benefits, employee benefits are the other ones that it represents.
So is everybody clear with that?
Yes.
All right.
Do you want to open it to the public?
Oh, sure. We'll open up the public hearing. No comments. I guess I can close the public hearing then. All right. We close the public hearings. And our next.
We need the resolution.
All right. So we need a I can't find it here.
Motion to approve.
Oh, yes, I get it there. Motion to approve the resolution?
I move for resolution number 1379-23.
Is there a second? All righty. So we would need a roll call.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
All right. Let's go then on to item seven, resolution number 1382-23, a resolution requesting fund for education program from Winnaishie County Solid Waste Agency. Darcy, what is that?
So this is a grant that we apply for every year from the Winnaishie County Solid Waste. Last year, we received at least $172, which we utilize those funds towards large item pickup notices. We print recycling information that we hand out to people when they have questions for recycling, things of that matter. So this is just applying for grant funding again for 2023. It requires a resolution.
I move that we adopt that resolution number 1382-23.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Right. So item eight then is ordinance number 707-23, in ordinance amending chapter 135, street use and maintenance of the city code of ordinances. Darcy, can you explain that?
So this ordinance basically is just kind of a clarification to our current ordinance as it has regarding snow in the street. We had some issues this winter, and I just felt like this language is a little bit more clear when we're trying to enforce people dumping snow in the street. So that's what this change is to our code.
So I didn't know I could do this, but I went on my phone and pulled up the ord, you know, and read this whole thing. So what was this chapter 69 about? Because I pulled up 135 and it all kind of fell into place, and I saw it, but I didn't know what that chapter 69 was for.
Oh, you know what? There's an air on this ordinance, Mary. The city attorney has an air. You're right.
You're going.
It should be one, chapter 135, not chapter 69.
Okay. Okay. Well, I move we approve ordinance. Do we move this? Is that what we're doing now?
Yeah.
Okay. 707-23 with the change of that number.
All right, very good. Second.
I'll second it.
This is regular voice?
Nope.
Okay.
You ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Okay, so now you can let it go to a second, third reading, or you can choose to waive the second, third, and final adopt tonight if you want.
I move we waive the second and third reading of the 707-23 that we just approved with the correction.
All right. Second?
I'll second that.
This is awful voice?
Yes.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Right.
Wait, with this, that's right. It's going to go fast tonight.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, that's right. Be careful what you wish for.
All right, item nine then is 657A property discussion. That's the one?
Yep.
All right.
All right, so in the pass round, I don't know if everybody saw the pass round.
I got it over to the board.
We have a house in there that we have
I guess.
Had a lot of unpaid utility and looks like it's been abandoned.
Is that where the fire was?
No. No.
No.
So we've been talking about whether or not the city should take some action, which the action we were considering was the 657A. And that's where the attorney would file that basically that the property has been abandoned, and the city would start the process of taking it. If the homeowner wanted to keep it, they would, we would require them to start fixing it up and
Pay all the bad.
Pay what's, you know, the utility.
Do we have the owner on that?
Yep, it was on that form there.
Yeah, I just didn't remember who it was. Yeah, that right there. This is what the owner?
Yeah. We would have to send housing enforcement and get an inspection report for the city attorney. I don't know that he's going to be able to get in. I don't know if they'll respond to us to go in.
Is anybody in there?
No.
Nobody living there?
There was people living there back before COVID. I want to say 2019 might be, and then they basically up and locked. And never came back.
Was there anybody that we would know, I mean, was it a long-term resident of the city? Of the town, you know?
That was living there?
That was living there.
Well, there is been a number, number.
It's like a rental. I mean, people.
So the owner is not the one that's going to live in there?
No.
No. Does he know that it's abandoned?
Well, he certainly should because we send all the bills and notices to him. And he's sent a letter. We don't hear, he does not respond. I'm not sure what the inside looks like even. Left it for years. Abandoned. And the water is disconnected for nonfatement, so.
That probably is a mess full of rats and raccoons.
So I guess the question is whether you want to start that procedure? So it's something you're interested in, or
I think we better do something. I think we should get it started, don't you, the board? To start something to get it.
What are our options?
Well, that, the option we're thinking is the 657A. So we would give notice, our attorney would give notice, that we're going to take it because we feel it's been abandoned.
I'm saying, what options do we have besides that? Not many.
But it's it.
Technically, it's not a dangerous building because nobody's living there. It's not, you know, the work's not falling in or any of that. I guess, you know, a lot of times we don't, if we're thinking of doing a 657A, we like to have an idea of what we're going to do if we acquire the property. I've had someone contact me that would be interested in rehabbing it if, you know, the price was right. So that's an option.
We don't know that nobody's in there. I mean, there could be people going in.
The water is all.
At a shelter.
I don't think so. I walk by there all the time. I don't see any traffic going in.
I think too, I think another thing too is there's probably rats and everything in it. That could move on to the neighboring properties.
Well, it's, it's not good for the neighbors. You know, it's not good for the neighbors to have to.
Not good for the town?
No.
Does he have any recourse once we do the 657A?
He can bring the property up to.
Not too late.
No, absolutely not. They get quite a bit of time. We give notice first that we're going to start, we're going to take it unless you get it up to some code. Yeah.
Well, I think we should take action on it. The 657A.
Okay.
You made a motion to proceed?
Yeah, I move we proceed with that because.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's one second to that. Any further discussion? Yeah, not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oui, no? Carry. All right, we will proceed with that one then. Okay, item 10, and fire agreement. Resolution number 1385-23, resolution approving 2080 agreement for the creation of the postal area fire protection district.
I read that whole thing, and that was long.
Yeah, it covers some ground, and this is, Dom, you got anything to throw in on that one?
Not really. Most of that's more for the board. Like for the actual fire stuff, that really doesn't pertain to us, I would say.
Yeah, this is, this is putting this thing together is what that is.
For actual fire, there is maybe one paragraph out there regarding us.
Yeah.
Most of that's pertaining to the development board.
Okay, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
I was wondering if there was also maybe a typo or something like number four, for example, and then there's a couple of other places which is that it won't, it will be perpetual unless terminated under provisions of paragraph 19. But should that be maybe 18? Because 19 just talks about the distribution of assets after after the dissolution, and 18 talks about the termination. I'm just wondering if we change anything. It mentions that it number four, and then somewhere else it says.
Oh, right.
I should probably leave chapter 18. I mean, paragraph 18.
Dennis, what did you, what were you saying from number?
Four.
It says that under the provisions of paragraph 19. Yeah, but I'm just wondering, it should be maybe 18. It said it somewhere else as well. Whatever, every time it said paragraph 19, I think of men.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
So there's actually seven members, right? But the one is not voting, the fire chief is not voting.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, in paragraph 17, at the end of 17 also, or in the beginning and the end of 17, it says paragraph 19 below. And then at the end of 17.
So that should be 18.
Yeah.
Doesn't change that. No, it doesn't, but we'll let Matt Erickson know because he drafted it.
Yeah. That's good to have a bunch of ayes on this. So any we can discuss this thing? All right, is there a motion to go ahead and accept it as it is written? A little bit of a comment on that. We, Mary, you were in on that, and Larry.
Yeah.
We met with the firemen and with the rural board and went over this and there was some language changes, you know, and from all three, all three parties had a few things to say. So this is, this is the revised edition.
I don't know that there's anything else we could say about it. I mean, if that's what they want to do, I guess that's what we should we should do.
Yeah, so we would need a motion then to go ahead and accept.
I move with that's resolution number 1385-23.
All right, Mary, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Okay, let's go on to item 11 then, engineering proposal from Erdman.
All right, so you had three different proposals in your packet from Erdman Engineering. The first one is for the East Military Water Improvement. It's an agreement for his professional services for getting together our project and working with the DOT. That amount is an amount not to exceed $6,800. We've also had a proposal for Tilden West Water Main Project. And again, that is getting together the plans and specifications and working with the DOT. That amount is not to exceed $3,850. And then the final proposal we asked him to bring to you would be a getting together the plans and specifications for a development on the Harden Drive subdivision or the Yulenhawk property as we know it that we just recently purchased. And that amount, basically, he gave two fees. One in like two steps. The first part would be $6,100. And then later on, if we're looking to move forward, there'd be $3,500 for that.
The one for East Military Water with the amount not to exceed the $6,800, does that include the one that he's going to service invoice, whatever, hourly rates? It says that the services that aren't included, the thing, agreement. But then for that, like after number eight, under the additional services survey, those are going to be like at hourly rates. Is that included in the $6,800?
No, it would not be.
So it wouldn't?
No.
So that's also services not included?
Right, yeah.
Is there a maximum of how much that one costs?
One thing I can tell you about Erdman is he's pretty good about keeping his costs down. That's why we need to cite him. It's hard to know.
So this last one, he's just going to look at that property and kind of come up with an idea.
With a plan for you.
Roads, utilities.
Yeah, we talked about maybe putting a park in there, like a green space, and how each lot, how big they would be and how to divide it. I think it would be good to have a plan on your shelf so that when you're ready, or if we find a developer, you can say, this is what we want, or it's good to know what the cost would be.
Right, right.
So that you can plan accordingly going forward.
That makes sense.
Well, and then we could show it to people in town too, you know? I mean, to spur some interest to buying the lots, you know, so.
I guess I would say that the number one agreement that we probably need to really consider right now is the East Military because we do want, that's the most critical line that we need to replace. The one on West Street is not as critical. And if it comes in that it's affordable for us to work with the DOT and do it, we will. But it's not as critical, and if it's more than what we can afford, it's good to have the engineering done so we know maybe a year or two down the road, we could attempt it. But I would have to say the military is the most critical.
It's a good time to do it while the DOT is coming in.
Right, right.
Not have to tear up my street twice. At least you could do one at a time.
So what we're looking here for then is a
Motion just to approve better engine.
All right, is to, a motion to approve the agreements.
So moved.
Second? Somebody say a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so this is just the voice?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oui, no?
So we're just gonna when the DOT comes, DOT comes, and we're going to say, okay, this is what we want, and how much.
Right, so he, what he'll do is he'll put together the plans and specifications for each one of these projects. That's the amount.
Okay, okay.
So then we know how much money we need when DOT, and then it goes out to bid, right? And the engineer says, here's our plan and specifications to bid the project.
Okay.
That's what, that's what he's doing.
All right, let's go on then to item 12, Wellness Center Water Bottle Fountain.
Yes. That filling, water bottle filling station that's down in this park. Melanie got a grant or something, she could fill out this grant for some dental thing is trying to encourage people to drink water. And so they're giving grants. And she wondered if we wanted to write a, write a grant to get another one like that to maybe put down by the pool or something like that. And she's already written one for, by the Wellness Center that where we tore out all those trees. She's written a grant that we are going to have a bicycle fixing station. So you can go and put it on, you can put your bicycle on this stand, and then there's tools that are tethered to it. And then you can fix your bike. And so she thought it'd be nice to have a water bottle thing or water filling station there. And so she's written a grant for that. And she said, as long as she's written that grant, it would we want her to write one for us to get one for down there, she would be willing to do that for us, and she's already written it, so.
Down where, by the pool?
By the pool, yeah. Because that park is so heavily used.
It is, yeah.
And it'd be nice to have a
Would be by the pool or by the park? I mean.
Well, I don't know. Well, wherever we want to put it.
Where we want to put it.
Yeah, we want it. So anyway, she got the grant and thought she'd pass it on to us, or, you know.
Granted, she'd help us do that.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway. I suppose to let her know what we decide.
Good. So we would, we'd need a motion then to accept that, if that's where you folks want to go.
I move that we that we have Melanie do the grant so we can get a water station, water filling station near Lols Park or by the pool, wherever we decide.
Okay, second?
Second.
I heard you that. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oui, no? All right.
I'll tell her then, if she has to do that for us.
Item 13 is a land lease, set public notice for sealed bid, which would be for our next, is that our next?
Yep.
That's going to be March. And this is the property that we're buying that we want to have somebody
farm it.
farm it for the year until we can get things going to develop it.
Right, so if you saw the lease agreement, it's for one year with the option to if we were to go do a three-year right out of the gate, you'd have to have a public hearing to do that.
Well, I think we kind of want to do something with it as soon as we can.
Right.
So it doesn't become a weed.
Yeah. So you bet. I think, I think too, farm it this year and see where we're at, yeah.
That makes sense.
We might have all kinds of developers come in and want to get going on it. We'll see. But yeah. So, yeah, go ahead.
It'd be just a sealed bid process.
Okay.
So we need a motion?
Yeah.
To set this sealed bid notice for the March meeting.
I move we set the sealed bid for the March meeting on the to lease the city land.
All right.
Second.
I, little comment before we vote though. I, I was noticing that, and I maybe, is that, did our attorney say to go ahead and put 29 acres in there?
Yeah, that's what they put in there. They just rounded it out.
Yeah. Well, I guess that's all right.
I thought it was 28, so it was 28 plus.
They just wrote 29. I sent them everything, and I sent, that's how they
Didn't think anybody was going to scream about 9 acres or whatever. I wouldn't think.
Well, I don't know. I ran a lot of ground. I would rather go with what tillable acres there is. You know, I mean, cash rents are high.
Yeah.
And
So what, how much is tillable there?
It was, what did, I wrote it down.
Okay.
24.
24?
Yeah. There's a couple of big waterways in there. And, you know, you want your waterways to stay.
Yeah, right, right.
So in the lease notice, do you want me to put 24 tillable?
But why, you know, if you're taking a, they're bidding on ground that they're going to run.
Yeah, you don't want to get shorter.
And I would say that 24 acres, this is what you're planting, you know? And leave our waterways alone.
Should we say something about that in here too?
So let's amend her motion then to make it 24 tillable acres on that proposal.
You can just direct me to change, I haven't put any public notice on yet. That's why I'm asking.
Okay. Well, then Dennis, do we need to put in about leaving the waterways alone?
Well, anybody that rents knows this. But if, but if you go in there and you know, let's just say that this ground, your cash rents are bringing the last I heard was almost 500 bucks. This is crazy.
500 bucks.
An acre. You know, so if you go from, from 24 that you've actually got crop ground and another five acres that you're not, you know, I don't know of anybody that wants to pay that kind of price. You know, on land that you can't do anything with.
Okay.
I think that that issue do this 24 tillable acres.
So leave it, so do you want me to leave it at the 29 acres with 24?
That's fine. I think that, I think that puts it in a nutshell.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So now you just need to vote. You had a motion.
You bet. Now we need to vote. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oui, no? Thank you. Item 14, budget review, set public hearing for budget FY 2324.
All right, so I had the final budget levy in your packet after our last meeting. I got everything in. I did make one change to insurance. I got a call from Bushman last week. Our property liability insurance is going up 10, or, I'm sorry, 15 to 20%. And she'll be here in the next meeting to go over your property renewal. She did say that the EMC Insurance, that's another carrier that does municipal insurance, they're going up 25%. So I told her, just bring the ICAP renewal, being that EMC was going up more than the ICAP. We'll just, you know, renew with them. So she'll be here at your next meeting. So anyway, based on our debt service and everything, we're looking at a levy rate of 15.84226. And I did give you the current budget so you could compare it. It is going up that levy rate by It is going up that levy rate by a little over one, one point oh seven, I should say, increase to the tax levy. I don't know how many of you follow anything that's going on in the legislature right now. But there was a bill that was recently voted on that the calculation or residential rollback was wrong with the state. And there's been a lot of debate on whether they're gonna correct it, which would mean less tax dollars coming into cities. Or if they're gonna wait a year and correct it then. But what we're seeing now is it sounds like it's gonna be corrected in this year. However, the bill has not been signed. So according to the Department of Management, his recommendation is you move forward with your budget because right now your timeline is still that March thirty-first deadline. If they sign that bill and we need to make a correction, they will let us do that to our budget. So I will ask that you just set your public hearing for our next council meeting, which is March thirteenth to have your budget hearing. We're gonna move forward as normal.
Isn't something like a hundred twenty-five million or something that is off by?
Yeah.
It's, it's amazing.
The debate they're having now, though, is whether or not they would, sometimes the state, well, the state had done backfill to, for the loss to cities. They're having a debate over whether they will or won't do that. Because it's, it'll be a loss for every city with the valuations on that rollback. So it's less tax dollars.
Ready?
Does anyone have any questions on your budget or any? If not, I'll just need you to make a motion setting your public hearing for March thirteenth.
Let me just ask one quick question. Now, now that the fire department is gonna be out on their own, we still have to put them in the budget because we give them a certain amount of money.
Right, so we'll give them just a donation. So in my budget forms are the city's budget. I took, I got rid of everything, so I don't budget utility or fuel, you know how we break down every line account. It's just a lump sum and it's labeled donation. And it'll be, the check will be written based on that twenty-eight.
Okay, just curious about that, thank you.
And then the rural will pay theirs, where now we budget for the rural, too, and then we invoice them and they pay us our half. We won't do that any.
Yeah, right.
That's no more. So they'll pay direct, too. We won't have to have any.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to set the public hearing for the March thirteenth.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mary, you ready, Darcy?
Nope, I don't need a roll call.
You don't?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those who no, here. All right, done with fifteen?
Mm-hmm, yeah, or no, I wish.
No, that was fourteen, yeah. So then fifteen, fifteen, resolution number thirteen eighty-three dash twenty-three. A resolution setting the annual salaries and wages for non-union employees of the City of Postville.
I thought we did this already.
We did it a year ago.
Was that a year, a year ago?
Yeah, you were.
I was, oh, I was, yeah.
So, um, okay. Non-union is by resolution every year with you, your union contracts are every three years. You are on the last year of your union contract, effective July first will be their last year. So you will be going into union negotiations by this fall.
Oh, boy. Okay, I guess it was, I've been here, your time flies and you're having fun.
Yep. So any questions on that?
So were these all calculated like on a percent?
Right, yep, so we use six percent. That's what I put in the budget, yeah. The deputy, just so you know, her six months is up. You'll be reviewing her in March, I believe, her six month is up. So at that time, probably two dollars more an hour, you know, we get, that's kind of what we talked about when we hired her. So I did use just a little bit less of a percentage, just based on that, knowing that, so I used a three.
Okay. So she'll get this and then two dollars?
She'll get her two dollars next month in March when, at the council meeting, if you choose.
Okay.
And then the raise in July, usually by first.
Okay.
New budget year.
All right, right here. I move that we accept resolution thirteen eighty-three dash twenty-three.
All right, second?
I'll second that.
Whatever.
Inghard?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Okay.
Shouldn't have you guys, shouldn't those two have been out of the room when we did this?
I'm kidding. Because your child raised her on there.
Well, one of them's got it right, so I don't know.
I know.
Let's go on then to item sixteen, resolution number thirteen eighty-four dash twenty-three. A resolution approving plat of survey to Yomakay County, Iowa, which is Donna and Kevin Everling, our owners.
Who showed you?
That must be like the mother and they bought it on contract, from what I understood. But they said the contract's been paid off, but when Erickson brought this to me, they said they weren't sure, so they left it on there. The mother, right?
Yeah, yep, surely. Yeah, and this is. It's not very plain, this at all. I mean, but this is, and the reason we do this is it's within two miles.
Yeah, so the code reads anything within two miles of our city limits. If they divide their plat or survey division, it has to be approved by the city. And they can't even record it unless you sign off and they have the official city seal on it. The recorder won't accept it. I did ask them what their intentions were with it. They said it will continue to be ag land, so.
Oh, they're not gonna put several houses on it?
Not, they didn't disclose that to me. They told me it would continue to be ag.
Okay.
So I don't know if they're selling off, it's what kind of what I got from her, because she said they closed at the end of this month and she needed it, because I, you know, it was kind of last minute that it got put on the agenda, so.
I don't know where this land is.
It gives you, go down Pole Line, which, you know, head west out of town and then take that first, right.
Right.
Or I'll sort of retract, so that's Pole Line.
Yeah, okay.
And it's, when you go down Pole, it is the first place on the left-hand side.
All right, okay. So that's gotta be like just within the two-mile thing, right?
I would say it's, it's, yeah.
Close, okay, all right. Okay.
You know, if you remember, we just, we did one, which was on the other side of the road for Gunderson and. Everling's.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the other side. So this, this is just across the, the.
All right.
So we need a motion to approve the plat.
So moved. Oh, I move we approve resolution thirteen eighty-four dash twenty-three.
All right, second?
Second.
Mary, you ready, Darcy?
Inghard?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Well, let's move right along here then. Item seventeen is the consent agenda. Anything in there that strikes you guys?
I do have one thing I'd like to just let you know about when it comes to your water operator. He actually has been nominated by the DNR. He's one of the candidates to be the operator of the year for this area.
Chris?
No, Zach.
Zach?
So he finds out, I believe, in Manchester next month whether or not he.
Gets it.
Oh, my gosh!
But he has been nominated, so they came and interviewed him. And they said, he said that he felt like they were shocked that he was as young as he was. Because usually they're near retirement when they're nominated for it. So that's something that he said, so.
Well, that's cool.
That's a great honor.
Yeah.
Well, that's very cool.
Anything else in the consent agenda? Mary, your name's on there.
Yeah.
For the Regional Housing Authority.
Oh, yeah. That's why I said congratulations, said Mar.
Well, yeah, you need to thank her and congratulations.
Well, it's interesting.
What is that?
It's funny to see this list of towns in the county, you know. And we're like the sixth largest town, you know. Hey, we're the big city people, but anyway, so it's interesting.
So I move that we accept the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. You're second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Just say no. Item eighteen, then, resolution for money to pay the claims.
I move we pay the bills.
All right, thank you. You're second. Darcy, whatever.
Inghard?
Yep.
Instrom?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Okay, have we commented? Still nothing.
Mary's a few words, Dominic.
JT, you got something? I've got, I've got a question, though, Mary, with the Regional Housing Authority, was that, did they have a program one time, because I was on that board also, for derelict houses for the community to take them down? And they had it, I don't know if they still got it or not. You know, once the community or the town got the property and.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell. I hadn't been for a while because they.
Like ten thousand dollars?
It was, yeah.
They forgot to send me the emails, so I didn't know where the meeting was, so, anyway, so.
Well, I just, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
I could ask, I could ask.
It was running that when I was on it, but I've been off now for a few years, so.
So we would get, we could take an abandoned house and.
Demolish. See, I would pay, like, I think Darcy said, it was about ten grand, so that would help quite a bit.
Right, yeah. It was like a grant-type program. You had, was it through the county, though? I feel like it was through the.
Val, it was Val, you bet. So each county that belonged to the Regional Housing and their economic developer was the head of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're just wondering if that program is still going.
That's what I'd like to know, yeah.
I did put out for you the little notice, that'll be in the paper, from the auditor in regards to the special election you have coming up on March seventh. Please encourage people to get out and vote for that hotel motel.
Are we gonna do anything about this letter we got from the lady at State's Drive? So that's gonna be.
Yeah, so I've been working with the housing inspector and he's making contact. He will be inspecting actually all of the properties, yeah.
And I see that we're gonna be acting, there's someone, they're gonna act on a one-twenty-seven East Williams. Charles Kelly's letter.
Yeah, we finally saw some movement there, repairs, so.
Yeah, there was a big, one day last week, a big dumpster out. It was full and it was gone. So there, yeah, finally, finding something moving. See you now. All right, I got nothing else. How about you guys? Well, then we need a motion to.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no, we're out of here. Thanks, everybody.
That is a record time.
I think that's.
You know who the chatty ones are now.
Yeah. You could probably do that more often.
Yeah, was, is he ill or is he out of town?